Good evening. Due to the fact that we do not have a quorum this evening, we are going to have just a general discussion among ourselves on some of the plans that we are in the midst of making. I apologize for not having a quorum, and we hope we have one at the next meeting. Would you like to start, Jen? Anything?
Do you want to just kind of take a quick look at the drafts there for the invitation letter and the charter for the Community Design Subcommittee? Dave, who sent his regrets, did send in some comments and potential clarifications, and maybe we can use those and just kind of look at it. And then we can do, you know, based on Dave's comments and any comments that you have, we can do a revised draft so that we can at least partially capture folks' thoughts, and we can then re-continue at the next meeting with the draft to make sure we get everyone's thoughts incorporated.
You want to start with the charter?
Sure. That sounds good. So can I go, if you want, I can start with Dave's comments and then...
Yeah, we can probably just start with that.
Okay. His first item was that the charter is to update the Community Design Chapter. I think it's less to up, less than to update the chapter. So he asked if the voters actually have to up, vote on it. No. The master plan is your document, so you as the planning board will vote on it. But we can make sure that that's clear, that, um, that it's, that the planning board, uh, the planning board adopts. He also had, though, to kind of pick up on the comment that it's to update. In this particular instance, we should, instead of using the word update, all the other chapters that we've done were an update. This one is to, is a new chapter.
Yeah.
So that's just a, um, to develop our draft. So that's just a correction that we need to make throughout, that that one's not an update. Okay, so he commented, he can, uh, he sees at the end where the Subcommittee will recommend to the planning board, but early in the description, it's seemingly in odds with the recommendation language found later. So maybe we just need to kind of clarify this paragraph a little bit more.
Yeah.
So we need to add the planning board to the list. So at the end. Yeah. So the outline is right.
Yep.
Create the outline, create a draft for review and consideration by the planning board, finalize chapter. Maybe we can add there, um, present final to the planning board. Then eleven PB, Planning Board Hearing, and adoption. So the next comment was there was no representation of the planning board on the Subcommittee. Got it. Oops.
Also agricultural.
Oh, do we have, oh, we've got an agricultural community member.
Yeah.
We weren't sure how to phrase that one. Hey, so I just did agricultural community member. Yeah. It's your local farmer.
But now, we're not going to leave this as a, that's it, nobody else type of thing.
Well, you got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve people if you get all of those to join.
Do you want the landowners here? I saw developer.
Uh, Litchfield resident? But to that end, do you want like a business, business owner?
I thought you wanted to get the major landowners here.
Well, this is what we could see if Rick has somebody, if, if, but he has somebody that could represent him. Because that actually brings in two different views on it.
So if you get a business owner, um, and you, there's also like the real estate agent or developer.
Yeah.
Like you want to get someone from the development community. So the folks that, you know, the folks that are going to do those bigger, the bigger projects.
That would be like Manny or someone like that.
Yeah, I'm almost thinking like Andy.
Or Andy, yeah.
Because he represents so many different clients, all different scales.
Yeah. And he has the background.
Yeah, I don't know. That, that was kind of what I was trying to...
Yeah, that one, yeah.
Did you want the education board there or no?
What was that?
Board of Education or whatever, education.
Oh.
I don't know if you want them there or not.
I got like the mo, the, the land folks. So I got Conservation, Zoning, Rec, and Historical Society, since there's no Historical Commission, but see if the Historical Society would. But we could...
Do you think they'd have an interest in it? We have a good lot of schools. Didn't you want to bring the fire chief and the chief?
Yeah, the, on the left.
I got Police Department or Fire Department.
Oh, you got them on the left, okay.
So, I mean, again, we're going to think of it, it's more like, it's the design side of things.
Yeah.
Right.
It's more focused on the aesthetic.
I thi, I think they'd more, if they did come in, be as listening.
Or as needed.
As, to listen and...
Uh, schools are in good shape, I think, overall.
Yeah.
Pretty modern, pretty middle one, and then the high school.
It may not be a good, a bad idea to have somebody from the school board.
I, well, I think...
For budget, do we budget? No, we don't care. I don't really care about budget, like, but...
In, in the interest of like, so a committee size, when you're trying to do something, you usually kind of max out at ten people. If you got more than ten people, it's hard, one, it's hard to fit them all around the table. Two, um, it gets to be a bigger group and folks don't participate. Um, and so then you, you end up losing people that might otherwise be a really valuable member.
Yeah.
Um, so one thing to think about is another chapter, another piece of this, is community facilities, which doesn't focus on what things look like, but it's focusing on the facilities. You know, do we have, and so that, in that case, you definitely want to be talking to the school board. You definitely want police and fire, um...
Yeah, let's, let's leave it... You can leave it to high school student and drop the police and fire off.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That may sound better.
Fire's going to be mostly concerned that your buildings aren't too tall and that the truck, you know... Yeah, um, and police is going to be mostly concerned with good, you know, secure, you know, the security side of things. Things are, are lit properly so that, you know, they, you know, have those shady shifty corners, um...
Yeah, Litchfield resident, who's that, is that going to be one or many?
So I think for each of these, it's one person to represent each.
Yeah, because you want to keep it a smaller group. You want to get representation from different perspectives.
So we're going to keep data collected from as much as we can, but there's going to be one representative.
Right, so that one representative, that's kind of that next paragraph, is responsible for, um, keeping their respective group informed and, and coming prepared to represent the views of the group.
Somebody who's excited about this.
How are we going to pick who the resident is?
Um, you know, that's a really good question. So most of these, you're going to throw it out there, right? And you're going to say to the Conservation Commission, come up with somebody to, to join the committee. For the ones where it's a high school student, a resident, an ag community member, a member of the senior communities, um, real estate, someone to represent the development community, I, hmm, you have, you're going to have to recruit people. Uh, and, and you may get multiple people. And so how do you do, or, or do you just invite, or do you identify people that you think might do a good job? Invite them and see if they're willing. Um, and if they're not, then you throw it out there.
Yeah. But you also have the thing too that, like, the Board of, uh, Board of Selectmen may cover the Rec Commission as well. Because they have...
Yeah.
One of the members of the Selectmen is on the Rec Commission.
Okay.
Which would not, would not be really a bad thing because, you know, hopefully they'll go back and talk to the people and the other...
Right.
Their boards, and come back with a consensus of what they're looking at.
If they're willing to come to this. I mean, that's the other thing, is this is a volunteer thing.
Yep.
But I like the, I mean, overall, I, I think that it, you've got a pretty good spread of a diff, different, a diverse group here. I agree that police and fire might not be entirely necessary for a design chapter.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but other than that, I think that we've got pretty good diversity of this group.
Did you add, did you add business to, business?
Um, I did add business on, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. I agree with you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. So I'd recommend adding or the planning board to any other topics identified by the Subcommittee. Okay, I think that's on the next page. Oh, okay, yep. So that's two H. Going back to the previous page. He also has, uh, there appears to be no direct statement that the Subcommittee will participate as part of the planning board meetings. Is this intentional? If so, why not add it? I don't think it's intentional. I'm, I'm thinking that last paragraph under organization, we can just clarify that, um, that, that, that third meeting of the month, that third Tuesday of the month is the planning board's regular work session.
Yep.
Okay.
That's all he, that's all Dave had for comments.
What about the on-demand transportation?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Tom?
Well, I, I think, I don't think Dave understands what on-demand transportation is. Because he's looking at a scheduled transportation, which unless a town puts out a lot of money, you're not going to get. On de, on-demand transportation is you have a doctor's appointment. You can look out. You could call up two days ahead. And for a minimal fee, they'll pick you up, take you to your doctor's appointment, bring you back.
What if it was a private company that did it? What if it was a private company that, that...
It'd still be on-demand.
Yeah, it'd still be on-demand.
Right.
Yeah.
Or scheduled, if they had a schedule.
It's on-demand.
Yes, yes, it's...
If a private company did it.
Did like fixed route service?
If it decided to.
Yeah, well, scheduled means you're going to have, you're going to have this bus do this route every Monday.
Well, maybe a private company would have a minivan or something that...
It'd still, it'd still be on-demand.
On-demand?
Unless they have a...
Even with a schedule, it's on-demand?
What, what, what the thing is, just the whole thing for it is...
Because we're not going to, what we were saying is, is it's not likely we're going to get a bus stop in town.
Right. It's not going to stop at a bus stop.
Okay, so they're saying...
Yeah.
The person who wants the service...
Would have to call them.
Like loser or whatever, okay.
Yeah, makes, with them.
Okay, so you're saying it's not going to run all the time.
Right.
It's whether you want them there.
And a lot of them do like...
I don't know if a private company would want to do that. I don't know if a private company would do it, swing by anyway.
Do they on-demand?
Or, or, or scheduled.
Scheduled, no. They're not going to do it.
But on-demand, we already have in the area.
There is, yeah.
Nashua has a very nice one. But I'm thinking if we, if we did it, we'd more, more than likely go with Manchester.
Yeah.
Because you're talking across the river.
Yeah.
And most people here would go to Manchester or Hudson rather than Nashua.
Just a, a question now. Again, kind of playing devil's advocate here, um, and making sure we don't put too much into the design chapter. Is there a design component to the on-demand transportation services? Or is that a transportation?
Yeah, that's interesting.
It, well, no building is such, no.
Right. Does it change the commu...
It's in the design plan.
Does it commute, change the community character?
Yeah. Yes or no? I, I mean, it, it can change drastically.
Okay.
It's a, it's a need for people in the community.
Okay.
Is it a physical building? No.
No.
Is it a physical, uh, product we're getting? Yes.
But you're not touching Janet's blue bus.
No.
It's going to be blue.
And, and we'll go with that. We're, we're going with blue and white. Cut. But yeah, it's, it's not, I, you know, I, I think I'd leave it in there.
Yeah. Okay.
See?
Yeah.
Because I know, I mean, I've had a lot of people ask me about it.
I know. Oh, I don't...
In the senior centers?
Yeah. I, I definitely do not question the need for it to be a discussion point.
And maybe this is the way to get it in.
Okay. Any other charter draft comments?
This looks, looks good, yeah.
Are you going to send attachments with this? At the bottom it says attachments, if there's going to be anything in this letter. Two of them. To the inv, nature inviting.
It doesn't say attachments, does it?
Mine says attachments. I don't know if I have the PDF or the word. Mine's a, I have the doc version. At the bottom.
Oh, yeah, under the signatures. Under the signature blocks.
Oh, under the charter? Oh, it's just yellow highlighted, because do we want any?
Yeah.
Yeah. If there was any, uh, we just, we put that there as just a, and so any of the yellow highlighted things, were kind of like placeholders where we could discuss whether there was something more to add or include, but we wanted to put like something in there as a prompt.
Would we send an attachment with this?
I don't think there's much to...
They pretty know how much the town, and they wouldn't be on this.
Yeah, it's, well, it's...
Maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like, it's like she said, it's a placeholder.
Yeah.
You may, you may want to attach the 2012 survey.
That's a good idea.
Oh.
To it.
Very good.
Or any other surveys we have.
Okay.
Like the one that the, uh, What's Up Litchfield did.
We've got one that's a, like a short summary. It was like, it incorporates the 2012 plus all the subsequent outreach. That's a little more, you know...
Yeah.
A little more concise.
But that, that would be good to put in there because it, it gives you immediate talking points.
Okay.
And the, the What's Up Litchfield, uh, survey was shortened to the point too.
Yeah.
But I'm sure they're going to be involved with this.
Nice.
Yeah.
That'd be great if one of those guys could, could volunteer as the, as the resident rep. That'd be great.
That'd be awesome. Yeah, they do the show on like that. TV thing that they do, or on their, on their little, uh...
Wait, what do they do?
There's a little show that they do.
They, every week, they do a little show from the driveway, I remember Motto.
Yeah.
What?
Yeah.
New, the news updates. On cable access or just on their...
On their Facebook page. I don't know if it's on cable access. I'd have to ask my dad.
Yeah, it's, it's little video clips they do.
Yep. There's like little like news and Litchfield news.
That's awesome.
Like they, like they go to the strawberry festival.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And interview somebody.
Yep.
And post the video on, on YouTube.
It's really cool.
On the site.
Man, I'd better get one of them on the committee.
Yeah, for sure.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
We, yeah...
Those are, those are the movers and shakers that, that you need to...
And they're community oriented.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's...
Well, they're out, clearly out there talking to everybody.
Oh, yeah.
So they're a really great conduit to represent the, you know, broader community.
Did you get a touch with anyone?
Yeah.
All right. Yes, I guess that's the, that's like the next step. Maybe we can do that at the next meeting. Is if, you know, you, you guys need to decide whether you want to send an invitation letter out there to kind of people that you think are great representatives and might be willing, um, or do you want to open it up and let people apply? So I think you guys need to think about how you want to approach that. I can, um, um, so Brookline just set up a committee to, it's to study, uh, what to do with some leases around a pot, pond. Totally a different, um, different topic. But they created, they did this whole, create a committee specifically for this one project. Um, they did the whole charter. They, um, came up with and said, okay, we want a representative of a leaseholder. We want a resident from the community who's not a leaseholder. We want a selectman. We want a Conservation Commission member, you know, same kind of thing. So I can ask them how they went about...
Giving people?
Getting people. Yeah.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah. So...
Because the boards, I think we should present that in person to them.
Yeah. That's why we have this lovely letter drafted for you, Tom. And then you can just sign while...
Yeah, I noticed that.
We can, we'll fill in the blanks and help you out.
In his com, in his comments as well.
Huh?
I said, in his comments as well.
Yeah.
Um, Dave deferred to you on the letter, since you're the one signing the letter.
Letter looks good from what I've seen of it, yeah.
It's good, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay, so the board needs to decide. I think the easy ones will be like the Selectmen, the Conservation Commission, the zoning, the rec folks, because that, you can just send them a letter and say, hi, we'd like one of your members.
Right.
Choose amongst yourselves.
Yep.
They're an easy group that can sit around a table, self, you know, select and nominate someone to come. Um, it's, it's these broader groups that don't actually have a specific person. Well, the high school students, actually, not bad. You could send it to the principal and be, and say, hey, or guidance counselor. Send it to the school, say, hi, you know, we'd love to have a student participate. It's a great civic opportunity, um, you know.
It's great on the red side.
Identify, you know, if you could put this out and select a student that would be interested and willing.
Yeah.
And let the school, let the high school pick someone.
Yeah. And it could be somebody that's going in that direction with their education.
Right.
Because we have a few of them, could be here now.
If you got a kid who, this is, this is good, we can kind of tweak the letter. Um, if you got a kid who is interested in like urban design, community design, architecture, or even just like illustration, you know, but has a civic minded, you know, someone who's gotten an art skill, an art background to them, holy tamoly would this be a great college application thing to have because they could have some real stuff that they could, they could say, they could be the designated, um, artist for the chapter. You could get some custom illustrations for the chapter, right? And they could get something great for a portfolio to submit for a college application.
Yep. That sounds fantastic.
Yeah.
So it's a...
That'll be no problem. The other part of the community, getting every, all the other groups involved is going to be mostly, I think, just shouting out to that Litchfield What's Up group, to be honest.
That's, that's not a bad, yeah, that's good.
And then maybe putting something in the newspaper if we could.
Okay.
Just like, hey, anybody who is interested in this enough to read and join.
Send us a note.
Yeah.
All right, so you're leaning towards like broadcast it and let folks...
Yeah, because I don't know how else we would really be able to...
You'd have to know people's names and invite them and hope that they'd volunteer them.
I mean, some of the groups, we pretty much know who would, would work out on it.
Yeah.
And we can approach them.
Yeah.
If they say yes, fine. If they say no...
Okay.
Then we have to go to a little broader outreach.
Okay.
All right.
What about the gov, the, the main website for the town?
Yep.
Is there a bulletin there?
Yeah. That's easy, huh?
Anybody not allowed to do this, like by association? You know, like sometimes contests, you can't be related. I'm just saying, is there anybody excluded?
I don't know.
Okay, just throwing it out there.
Why are you trying to...
No, just by affiliation.
Are, are you trying to, trying to drag Russ back in?
I mean, somebody too close to it that shouldn't be on the committee, I'd say.
Yeah.
I don't know. It'll come up.
I can't, I can't really see, see that either.
I mean, we're already getting the people that are actively developing when, as like one of the people we want, so I feel like...
Yeah.
I'm just trying to say, is anybody, why, bring anybody in, oh, we really don't want you. Kind of a conflict there. Just think about it, though.
We, we don't want to, we don't want to be recruiting all our family members and just like having it be the planning board and, and immediate family, you know, so...
That makes sense.
But, you know, you wait and see how it works out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, in a, in a town this size, half the ones you're going to get probably have been on the planning board at one time or another.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's like, you know...
And that's okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
And some, what, ones that haven't been, been before us, though. But, you know, it's, it's, here we get, it's a small community and that's, all right, that's bottom of the chart.
So what's next?
So, aside from, we'll tweak and the letter looks fine, gentlemen.
Okay. Cool. Kim, did you want to share your demolition review research?
Yeah, I can bring that up. It's in color on the, um, on the link. It's a little more than halfway down called Draft Three.
On the link below, Jen's.
It's, might be hard to see if you want to, um, if you want to, I gave you guys, did I give you the larger black and white? It's, might be hard to see if you wanna, you wanna, I gave you guys, did I give you the larger black and white copy?
I have it on the, I see it here.
It's under the first link for community design. And then when you go down to the bottom of the page, you'll see draft three.
What change between this one and the last?
Uh, the last one really is, where are we for Joan? Do you have a hard copy or?
I do. Joan, you do too. You have a hard copy.
Yeah, this is just not in color on the hard copy.
Although I think I clipped the edges.
Oh, that's okay. No, it's pretty, pretty much there. All right. So the difference between the prior one and this draft three was if you go down the section of, we went to the historic commission and it was historically significant. And we notified the owner. Remember, we placed a sign on the property and we set out a twenty-eight day, you know, counter. I added a bullet under that to, a second notice I think has to be created. I'm not sure how we're gonna do that. Um, I, then when we go down to the, we have the meeting, alternatives found. I might change that to include. If they heard the beating and they just went through the steps and they're still gonna demolish it, right? They don't care if there's alternatives or not, right? So I might add something for that. What also happened was if you go down that same chain, alternatives were found and the owner was in agreement with them. He went down to the yes section. We wanted to reintroduce back up to the top, the building inspector and code enforcement officer again. Okay, so if alternates were proposed, to bring that back in. And I won't thank in public the person who gave me that idea, but it was very good. So we can take that in line. All right. So I still have to talk with Kevin. I also, it's, I, I am the one, first he had a wedding, but then I had two weeks I had to do some personal things. So I called him today to see if we can set up a time to review this at this point. I probably, and you tell me if we should invite Troy to look at this, to see part of the existing process with phone calls.
Yeah.
Is anybody else that I should talk to? Um, so I'm gonna, still Kevin, because he's probably find some things in here, you know, that might need tweaking. And Troy, is there anybody else that you think I should talk to at the town level?
Is there anybody else?
That you want to take a pass at the current state of how it works today?
Yeah, I think just the two of them.
All right, so say.
Yeah, we've already met with you.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think who else is in town hall.
Really, no, you know, nobody else would be directly.
No.
Involved with it.
Like, so when we, when we send out, like when we get an application in just for a regular planning board application, the people we send it to for review are Joan and I, fire, police, Kevin, road.
Engineering.
And engineering as applicable. But engineering is not applicable here.
Right.
And fire and police aren't applicable here.
What did you say before engineering? Did you say Bruce or something?
Road, the road agent.
Oh, the road ranger, okay.
But that's for driveways.
Yeah, he wouldn't be involved in this.
He wouldn't be involved in this.
But I heard like Troy and Kevin would pick up the phone call to historical society. We've already talked to them. They're already here. So I guess anybody else that you can think that.
We should just all give them.
You have everyone.
We sort of got a semi nod from Steve Perry, although I won't speak at a meeting on record. If we have Kevin look at this, Troy look at it, we finally get the tweaks out of it. We still need to review the parameters where I say, here, we hit the five hundred square feet and the fifty years old.
Yeah.
You know, we still have to look at the timeline on the right-hand side, you know, to see if that's all, you know. But once we finally firm this up, then what would be the next steps of this? What are we gearing to do?
So then I would say the next steps would be, what do we, what is it, is it?
Where is it going? Is it going in zoning or where is it going?
Yes. It would, if we're gonna make it a regulation that would apply to privately owned structures, it would go in zoning. If it's a policy that you're looking for the town to adopt for municipally owned facilities, then you would want to get the selectmen to adopt this as a policy statement.
Both of them need the heritage commission because they're in this flowchart, this process?
Well, if you're doing it for the, um, so if you're doing it for, as a zoning ordinance for privately owned land, right? Or I should say non-governmental uses. Then yes, you would want the, um, the heritage commission to review.
Okay.
Um, if it's just for municipally owned governmental land uses, so I guess you could kind of clarify. So if it's municipally owned, but it's privately operated, you still, you're not exempt. You still have to go for, through the planning review process. Um, so if it's a municipally owned government use.
Yeah.
Um, then it's exempt from planning and zoning. So whether this is in zoning or not, wouldn't do anything. In that regard, I don't know that you would need to have a heritage commission, but you would need to have a body who is willing to serve as that advisor to make that historical determination.
So should we have two different processes, make two different charts?
I guess it's what are we applying it to?
Have one with saying private and non-government go this way or?
Um, well, so what it would come down to is if it's governmental land uses, it ends up coming out of the planning board's hands.
Okay.
So it would go to the selectmen and it would just be theirs. And that'd be municipally owned governmental land uses.
So what would be that process then? They wouldn't.
I mean, you could do basically the same thing. You do the same process. You could have it be identical. You, I think you would have more flexibility in how you structure it potentially.
So the yes column of the five hundred square feet over fifty years old, if it is true, it doesn't go to the commission at this point? It goes to the board of selectmen?
Yeah, because based, whatever, what it comes down to is governmental land uses are exempt from planning and zoning.
So if it's a yes, instead of heritage, we just go with board of selectmen route?
The selectmen and they would have to have somebody who would have, you know, they'd want to have somebody who's got some historic, historic preservation knowledge.
So I need, do I need to go into view the board of selectmen people to find out what they would want if that happened?
Again, if you're gonna get it to be, yeah, if you want this to be, apply to those governmental land uses, you'd have to convince the board of selectmen to get them to.
Get them on board.
Get them on board. That'd be step one.
For now, you can still send it to zoning, right? We could do the pri, we could just plan to do it as much as we can do.
Yeah. So if I come back with phase one of the private non-government piece.
Yeah.
And everybody's happy, Kevin, everybody's happy. Uh, planning board, we don't do anything with it at this point. We hand it off to the zoning board or how would it, does it?
No, we would draft it. So the planning board drafts zoning. So that's why you don't bring it variances. So.
Well, they'd still need a heritage commission set up, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Did somebody tell me that would just be the board of selectmen just writing a note or something? It didn't have to go through.
I think you have to go to town meeting for that.
Okay.
To get your heritage commission created.
So this is why I also might need to talk to somebody else to find out what the next steps are, right? Town meeting.
Yes, the zoning ordinance, um, the planning board would draft, the planning board would send it to town meeting for adoption by the voters for the zoning ordinance. You'd also need to create the heritage commission, which I don't know who proposes that and puts that on the ballot. I, it might be the planning board kind of proposes, the selectmen endorses. I don't know how that would go.
I think it would be a joint effort.
Yeah, I think a joint effort would definitely have more strength. Yeah, I don't know what the minimum is though. So a joint effort would definitely cover the minimum and then some.
But I, I would think planning, planning and selective should, should cover it.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Who else would be involved?
No one. No, no, no. Yeah, I don't know if, but what I, I guess what I was saying is I don't know if it's something that the planning board can propose and just put on the town meeting ballot or if the planning board, or if it's the selectmen that has to do it. I, that I don't know. It's, if you do both, you've covered both your bases and.
So the planning board, we would make a draft, right?
Of the ordinance. Yeah.
Draft ordinance with two things. One, to recommend to the zoning, right?
It would be the draft zoning ordinance. It'd be the language.
Draft zoning ordinance. And they would take it to the town meeting?
No, you, you put it on the town meeting ballot.
We do, okay.
First you go to a hearing.
Yeah, you'd hold the hearing.
This is what I think. Maybe that's not a scope of this meeting, the time, but.
That's okay.
I think I need to talk to somebody about what processes would be.
So, here, it's, we can do a quick.
Okay.
So if you want.
Let me write it a third time.
So create, there's, there's a, there's a cheat, cheat sheet slide, um, online there. In my like refresher of planning and planning basic, planning board basics, there, I think there's a slide on how, you know, how do we adopt zoning? Um, so what happens is the zoning ordinance is written by the planning board and adopted by the voters.
Okay, zoning is written by PB. Then adopted by the, by the voters, right?
Right. So that's zoning, the zoning ordinance. Not to be confused with subdivision and site plan regulations, which you write and adopt.
Okay.
The zoning ordinance has more. It's your, it's your statement of what you can and can't do. Your subdivision and site plan regulations are how you can do those things.
You need potatoes.
Yes. So that's why the zoning ordinance is separated, or the administration of it. You write, the zoning board adjudicates. Um, so you write the zoning articles, you draft them, you propose them, you hold a public hearing. The voter, you know, the residents can come in, learn a little bit more, provide some input. You revise your draft, you hold another hearing, you write a little warrant article and it goes to town meeting. The voters can vote it or they can reject it. If they reject it, it's dead. It does not go into your zoning ordinance. Uh, so, yeah, that's the process to create a zoning ordinance.
So that's only half of the equation, which I think is the main piece of this.
Yeah, that, that would be the language, yeah.
All right. But then the part two would be if it would be municipal piece.
The creating the heritage commission.
Oh, yeah, we have part two of that, yep. Part two of the flowchart here.
The part, the heritage commission becomes a second warrant article at town meeting. The question is who has to draft and submit that warrant article? Um, and I think what Tom and I are suggesting is if you have it endorsed by both the planning board and the selectmen, you've really covered all your bases and you have a stronger proposal.
And let Troy decide which one brings it up.
Yeah. Or town council.
Yep, you win.
So when we first brought this up with Steve here, he said if the planning board did nothing with it, as a citizen, I could go and do something. I don't know what he meant by that.
Petition.
Now, what process is that here? This is outside the planning board at this point?
It's, it's a parallel. No, a citizen can do a petition article.
All right, so we think strategy wise, we go with the planning board piece?
Yes.
Yeah, as long because you want it to be.
Is there an order of this? Should the heritage commission sort of be first or should the zoning?
They'd be, they'd go together.
They'd go together, okay.
Yeah, the only risk would be if the voters adopted the ordinance, but didn't the heritage commission.
But that could be worded in that if that happened.
We could talk to council about that, of having something where if, you know, if the one fails, the other goes away.
Do we want to just stay with that one for now?
Yeah.
All right, and if I do, then I need to do research on part two.
The municipal one would just be going to the selectmen and getting them to pass a resolution. That they would subject themselves. And basically, if you already have it in the zoning ordinance, you, what you could do is the resolution or the proposal to the selectmen would be for them to say that, um, as a town, they would subject themselves to that provision of the zoning ordinance. Uh, because right now they're exempt.
And we would have to rewrite the whole thing.
Right.
Same layers and both.
They just, they just take what we have and use that.
So it's better for us to do phase one and have that one ready to go. Well, we'll do them both together, but all right. All right, so let's get Kevin, what do you, you know, on board with this and Troy. All right. And I'll speak with Troy too, just on it. So again, looking at this guys, if you don't mind, if you went down the yes route from the, from the. All right, if you go down the yes route, that's gonna go to the historic commission. If it's the municipal kind of building instead, it would be if we adopted this sort of, they would call in their expert, whoever they decide, whatever process they want, right? We have to find out what they want.
So, well, for the government land uses.
Well, if they adopt with the planning board and the zonings and all this, they would probably follow this exactly, right?
Who, the selectmen?
Yes.
So if the planning, yeah, so I would say if the planning board proposes and the voters adopt the zoning ordinance, I would just, I would not create a separate and parallel system. I would just ask the selectmen if they'd be willing to subject themselves to this provision of the zoning ordinance. And then you're done.
Well, worst case, they say no, and then we just have this in place.
Yeah, worst case, they say no, and then you say, well, would you be willing to at least do something before you rip down a building?
Okay, so we'll handle that when we get to them. All right. All right. So I think by August first, we can hopefully have this at least, if I can meet Kevin by then, I think at least, and Troy. I know vacation times are tough now, but we can get this piece going. One more thing, and I'm sorry I'm taking up time here. When we say we write a zoning ordinance, we would do it? Do we have a draft of that or anywhere or do we come up with that?
Which what?
If we had, you're saying we would write, the zoning ordinance would be written by the planning board, right?
Or your staff.
We have a staff? Oh, good. So you won't look at something I give you and laugh, okay? Gotcha. Well, do we have funding for that?
If the, if the collective says yes, if the chairman directs us, Tom, Tom is our boss. So if Tom says go forth and do this for the board, we, you know.
Okay. Well, that's good. Good to know. All right. All right. Going forward. And any feedback, again, look at this, any feedback that you see or something you think should be added? Let's put it in here.
How does the historic commission get created?
That's the, gotta send it to town meeting.
Yep.
Well.
Yeah, that's why.
Because we have to say what its function is, right? We'd have to, like the costs, the startup costs, or whatever, yeah. So this is, the process, when you say it goes to vote, is this the one time a year thing that we go through in the town?
Yep.
So we have one shot at this for this year.
This year.
Yep.
So I've, okay, I better get going.
It's not a money article that would say if it gets voted down, you couldn't do it again, right? It's not, it says no, no means no. It's not, it's not a money article.
Right. Um.
That historic commission really has to be explained because you don't want people to think that you're telling them what to do with their historic structure.
Right.
That's why we ran to last time.
Right. That's why I would call it, I think, was, was that a, I don't know. We would want to use different words. So if that.
We were trying to get a district.
If it was called a, yeah, if that was called like a historic district commission, we wouldn't want to just call this a heritage commission.
And we would, you would point it to some law of what the definitions were.
Yeah.
They're very generic.
Yep.
Yeah.
So should I put something together for that, just as a draft for you?
Well, there's an RSA now for enabling for heritage commission, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we should start working on the wording of that, like a couple of paragraphs? All right, I can see what I can come up with on that.
Let me see if I have what, what.
Jen may have something for the, whatever towns have.
I'm trying to think what I, I, um, because when we met, I'm trying to think if I had something on that pulled.
Look at, like, just pull paragraph in.
Yeah, Jen has a lot of available.
I'm trying, just trying to see if I have it in my folder here. I'm not very good at filing. I have a window sill.
It's laughing at my office sounding the same way.
It's dangerous.
So go to RSA six seventy-three four A and look.
Oh, do you have it there?
RSA what, six seventy-three?
Go, Joan.
What was it?
Six seventy-three four A, heritage commissions.
It had the definition there, right?
Let's see.
Because would, because then we need to do more research to find out whether to take the town cost wise, right?
No, this tells you what, uh, let's see.
But it shouldn't cost the town more for liability insurance.
It shouldn't cost town anything.
But, but I just want to spell that out, you know, when we're writing it up from the quick two paragraphs. People tend to say it costs nothing to approve the ballot.
I don't think I have the research in here. All right.
But this sounds like this needs a town meetings also before it even gets to the ballot, right? This heritage commission.
Wait. Yeah.
So we, okay, so we will, that has to be gonna be going on in parallel in the next few weeks with me, and us.
You have time, so, um, for any of these things, I think you can do a hearing in November, usually you do like a hearing at the beginning of December and a second hearing in January for town meeting items. Yeah, I don't have the research in here for some reason. Might be in the scary window, so.
You can touch base during the week. You have two jobs now, you have the interim, you know, over there as well, so. All right, but I can at least look at this, um, what Joan just gave us, the six seventy-three four A.
Uh-huh.
Uh, start writing it up, and then maybe, if I meet with Troy on this process, we can discuss the impact dollar, you know, just we can get all the information for getting ready.
Yep. Mm-hmm. Honestly, like dollar wise impact, they would meet only as needed, so.
I know.
There's no real cost to doing meeting notices, cause they just get posted, I mean, it'd be.
Cost is the least of your problems.
Yeah.
Bigger problem is, people don't wanna be told what to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not gonna call it anything with district, painting fences, you know, none, none, none of the, no.
But they're want, they're going to wanna know what.
Right.
It entails and what their.
Yep.
Job description is of this commitment.
That's why I have it written down, yeah. That was pretty, pretty clear, yep. Yep. And it's gonna be an advisory role only, right? You know, we can word it to be, you know, at the least, so.
Yeah.
Offensive to some people. Okay, so I'll try to touch base with Kevin and Troy by August first and and get some, minimum data gathering on the.
Okay.
On the, what a heritage commission is and on that regard.
I'll go, I'll go back to the stuff that I have pulled and, um, I'll send you some examples when you find them.
Thank you.
Anything else?
One, Joan, uh, can you put for next meeting for the budget? And send everybody a copy, and just basically, if we can just pull the planning board section of it. I know we had, you know, the breakdown we had of the different things.
Well, you mean, um, Troy's spreadsheet?
Not Troy's, ours. You know, we had so much for mailing, so much for.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah.
Next meeting's August, what is it?
August. Yeah. August first.
August first.
Start the month outright.
That's right. Jumping right in.
Spotted. Anything else you can think of, Joan, for tonight?
No, I just have a bill for you to sign, that's it. Oh, correct it. I can put those corrections in and resend them minutes.
Do you wanna do all four bullets I wrote or just one and three? My intent last week was hostile, wasn't the point, it was to keep the integrity of the planning board, that was my main.
That, that was your email after the meeting, right?
Yeah, no, no, I sent it before the meeting. Oh, the meeting just now, what I just sent to you?
No, the, your comments after the meeting.
I didn't have any comments after the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Maybe just the email was late. So that was the whole intent of that, so I, the meeting ended up going in a certain direction.
Business point.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to, we could put where it happened, why it went down the way of, um, the dilemma the meeting, yeah, we were kind of put into, and how we resolved it by getting more public opinion, that's all. If we could add that in. I don't, you know, I don't, I have four bullets, definitely one and three, but if you could put in all four, it's up, it's up to whatever you guys want, we can decide next week.
Joan, I saw the letter that you posted from a resident.
Yeah, that was just informational, because he sent it to the planning board and it's really to the conservation commission, but I I figured I'd, you know, show you the copy because he sent a copy to the.
Yeah, um, is the conservation commission gonna move forward on that?
We've been talking to him for years and, um, I think he's finally ready to to, um, subdivide and do something. Would have to, probably would have to be reappraised.
Just like thirty, was it?
Yeah.
A little bit down on money right now, but see what happens.
Just thought it was an interesting, uh, interesting opportunity.
Yeah, and I did hear from, um, New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commissions and, uh, she's has a checklist on buying, you know, when you're buying property, she said appraisal isn't a bad thing, which, you know, we have to do an appraisal now. See where it goes.
Anything else we're opening up tonight, Jen?
Trapped you long enough for a non-meeting.
Our next meeting will be August first, if you did, case you didn't hear, and I hope to see you then. Have a.